Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Please take the roll.
Will do. Chairman?
I got it.
Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Oh, thank you.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donilon.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, a quorum is present.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for the approval of the April 26, 2022 committee meetings?
Some of.
All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Treasurer, do we have the treasurer's report?
Yes, we do, Chair Fulgenzie. Thank you. The corporate fund in the month of April had a beginning balance of $52,911,323. We took in total receipts of $9,806,316. We had total expenditures in the month of April of $13,579,189, which left the corporate fund with an ending balance of $49,138,450. Of that total balance, Chair Fulgenzie, the ARPA fund balance included in that is $14,359,607. This concludes my report. Chair Fulgenzie?
Thank you. Are there any questions regarding the OBM contract report, or do we have one?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
There's an item that's, I think it's the second to last on the second page, and it's a mayoral contract for $25,000, which is the most it can be before it jumps to ordinance because it's personal services. But this is a contract that requests, I think the wording is, just a second here, conduct audits and reviews related to city services, $25,000 by the law firm of Brown, Hay &amp; Stevens. And that's something that might typically be done by the inspector general. Mr. Zirkel, do you have additional information regarding what that's all about? And furthermore, could you make a contract available for Tim Griffin? I'd like to see a copy of that contract. Thank you.
I believe that is the inspector general contract.
Okay. And does the contract specify what audits and reviews are contemplated?
Well, that's any complaints or items. We'll get you a copy. It's just the standard every year contract for the inspector general services.
So you're saying that it doesn't contemplate a certain activity to review? It's just what might arise during the fiscal year?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Are there any presentations?
There's one. Chairman? Molly Burns?
We've been waiting on Molly.
Is this her armed guard?
Yeah. They got the key to the map.
Well, you bought Panera for us. Good deal.
Standing up for you.
Thanks, Molly.
Oh, no, Jim. They got you.
Well, thank you.
You're on time. Party.
Well, one looks like a big lake.
Yeah.
That's a lot of water, Chuck.
It is.
It's really good. It tastes really good.
Okay. Good evening. For the record, my name is Molly Berenson. I'm the executive director of the Springfield-Sengman County Regional Planning Commission. With me tonight, I have Joe Zibert, wait for the crowd, and Jordan Leaf. And they're primarily, among other functions that they do for the regional planning commission, on this project, they were the primary data analysis and drawers of the map. And so I brought them in case they, in case you have questions that I can't answer, which is highly likely, by the way. I wanted to just review for you the guidelines that were given to us by Corporation Counsel that he collected from you and that we were to follow with this particular project. The first was that each new ward should be nearly equal in population and as compact and contiguous of territory as possible. This shall be created in a manner so that no precinct shall be divided between two or more precincts, should be configured in accordance with the guidelines under the Voting Rights Act, and maintain existing minority representation as provided by law. In order to minimize voter confusion, the new map should be drawn so as to depart as little as possible from the current ward configurations while still meeting other criteria. The new proposed maps shall not place incumbent city council members in the same new ward. Requested that we created a map that may be overlaid with the existing map so the city council members may easily see and consider how the current boundaries will be altered with your initial draft ward map, and provide a breakdown, beach ward and population and demographics, comparing the existing ward information with the 2020 census information with the initial draft map. So let me start off with the process that we took to get where we are today. The first thing was, is the staff took the 2020 census data and applied it to the existing ward map. And that would help determine which boundaries needed to be adjusted. There were several things that we knew going in, but we wanted to test the assumptions. And the first was that we knew most of the population growth was in the West, and that was because of the development and the annexations that had occurred in 10 years. We knew that there was some proportional population growth in the South because of annexations around Lake Springfield. We also knew that East Springfield had lost population purely based on the number of demolitions and vacant lots. But in our office, we always like to quantify things because we are very data-driven. So staff used a software that is available from the Environmental Systems Research Institute, otherwise known as ESRI. Many of you probably have heard that phrase before. They began back in 1969 as a land use consulting firm, and they got into GIS and spatial analysis. And now they're a global international supplier of GIS information and software. Their tagline that they use in their marketing is, "They do the science of where." And I think that's particularly applicable to this project because that's exactly what we're here about tonight, is where is the population in the city of Springfield? Where was it? Where did it move to? And where is it likely to be for the next 10 years? So we knew, based on the data, and the data confirmed, that wards 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7 would lose population. And they lost anywhere from between 129 people in Ward 7 to 1,218 in Ward 3. Wards 1, 8, 9, and 10 gained population, ranging from 75 in Ward 8 to 1,954 in Ward 10. Wow. It kind of is a wow until you think about the shift in population and the annexation and the development of new subdivisions over a 10-year period. And that's the important thing is to remember, this is over a 10-year period. So then we also had to go back at that point and make sure that the guidance and the guidelines and the expectations that you had could also be met. So I'd like to bring several of those to your attention, and that'll help explain the maps as well. One was that the maps need to be configured in accordance with guidelines under the Voting Rights Act and maintain existing minority representation as provided by law. Draft 1 of this map, Ward 2 is 57.2% non-Hispanic Black, and under Draft 2, Ward 2 is 60.02 non-Hispanic Black. So that guidance and that criteria was met with both of these. You also directed that you wanted us to, well, the guidelines said that they need to be nearly equal in population. Based on the current 2020 population for the city of Springfield, that means that each ward's population needs to be as close to 11,439 people as possible. And the goal here is, is that in a perfect world, it would have been exact, but because of different boundaries, it can't be. So the purpose is to make sure that the percentage from that deviation is as small as possible. The largest percentage of deviation from the target population is 2.33% for Draft 1, and 1.4% for Draft 2. So it's very small, particularly when the industry standard is if you can get it below 5% to 7%, or maybe even as much as 10%, then you've met the requirements under the law. And these are, both of these maps are well a bit below that. Several of the other guidelines that you gave us were a lot more challenging. You wanted to, "Shall be created in a manner so no precinct shall be divided between two or more precincts." We didn't do that. And here's why. Your existing ward map divides four precincts, and all four of those splits actually have people in them. Draft 1 splits six precincts, but only three of those have population. The parts of it that is split, in some cases, are I dot right-of-ways, or it's a business with no physical population. So we're one under what your existing ward map is. You also requested the new proposed ward map should not place incumbent city council members in the new same ward. Under the existing map, seven of the 10 of you live within 1 to 3 blocks of your existing boundaries. That didn't give us a lot of wiggle room. When you're trying to pick up and move a population to accommodate for the shift in population, it made it more challenging based on where you live. So we still met that requirement, but I just wanted to point out that it's much harder to pick up and move in a neighborhood when you're looking at a map based on where you all live. But we did meet the requirement. You also wanted us to focus on compact and contiguous to the greatest extent possible. That's where Draft 2 came in. And I know that that was not a part of the assignment, but I think it's helpful to see what ignoring precincts and basing it on compact and contiguous would do to the map. So instead, Draft 2 uses a defined different structure, such as arterial roadways, railroads, as the natural boundaries of the wards. It still meets the other criteria except the precinct. And in Draft 2, it splits 54 precincts. That's right, 54 precincts. And that's a lot. So I know that this is not a map that probably should be considered. I just want, I think it's important to point out that the difference in the maps, based on the criteria, and how difficult it sometimes is when you have competing criteria. So you now have two drafts for your consideration. I would like you to focus on Draft 1 because I think that meets more of your criteria. I think it makes most sense. So in your packet, you have Draft 1. Behind that, you have the, our attempt at the overlay. If you look at what is the Page 2 of the mappings, it's kind of an overlay so you can see what has newly been added to your ward and which ward it came out of, or if you lost territory, which ward that went into. And then you also have Draft 2, and then the fourth page is an overlay. And then for those who are visually challenged, like I am, we gave you a big spreadsheet of the data for both drafts. That way, you had it for your information, and it's a lot easier to read than what's on the maps. I've also provided the same packet to the city clerk for public information purposes, the Office of Corporation Counsel, and I think, Mr. Griffin, do you have that packet as well?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. He's got it, too. And about 5 o'clock today, Joe provided the link to Julia Freibert, and it's on the city's website. So that way, anybody can go see it as well. We're also going to be leaving the map boards. I suggest one of them be down in the clerk's office, but that is totally up to you. This is a legislative function, and the ball is now in your court. I do request, and I have gotten this worked out with Mr. Zirkel, that any questions that you have or requested changes to the map or anything like that, that you route through either Mr. Z or through Mr. Griffin, and then they can get those information. They can kind of combine them and put all those requests together. And that way, everybody's aware of what those requests are. And with that, I'll entertain any questions you might have.
I got it. John? I don't see that part of it. Pull it out, Frank.
Molly, I need some tape.
I found a big table to be helpful, like a dining room table. Here you go.
Okay. Alderman Redpath.
Molly, thank you for a great job on these maps. They look pretty good. Maybe we won't agree, but they look pretty good out of the gate. You did break this down on population, which is pretty tough because I know our census changed considerably. We went from 117 down to 114, is that what I understand?
114, 394.
So, and the way you got it broke down, especially on Map 1, it breaks it down pretty much to everybody's getting the equal amount of constituents.
Correct. We, that's, that's one of the benefits. I'm very citizen-driven, and I want the citizens to have equal representation, and I think that's the fairest way to do it, is to make sure that the population is as close as possible.
Thank you.
Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also want to compliment you on the map. I was a little worried there, but it is reflective. And I think the second map, you know, I, thank you for taking the time to do it, but I think the second map shows the importance of the first map and the calculations because, you know, for my ward, it would push us back across a historical track that we need not be. So I thank you for the first map and the stats that it brings.
Thank you.
Alderman Perc, Alderman Donilon.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Molly, thank you for coming this evening. And just a quick question. I know you mentioned that the map is available electronically on the website presently. I assume that's a PDF that we'll be able to blow up and be able to read the street names and all that fun stuff?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm looking at my technical crew, but yes.
All right. That will aid me in my vision challenges.
It is tough. And we tried it a lot of different ways, and because of my visual capacities, I suppose, or incapacities, the guys are really sensitive to the fact that we need to have things darker. But when you started putting a lot of dark street names in it, then you lost a lot of the detail in terms of the lines. So of all of the versions they provided to me, this was unfortunately kind of the best one, I think, to share. So, but yes, it's on the website, and you'll be able to drill down on that.
Thank you.
Alderman Perc.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Molly. I'm not going to act like I know what this means, but gray obviously means something. And I have a big square, a donut, on both of the maps. What does that mean?
That, I think, is areas that is not in the city of Springfield. Let me step around here.
See a five?
Don't forget that you have Leland Grove, which is not in your area, but you've got Grandview. You also have Jerome. You also have pockets that are still within the county. For example, Laketown is still in the county. What we know commonly as Cabbage Patch is still in the county. And then there's an area around Highland Avenue that is still in the county, as well as an area north of Clear Lake Avenue up in the Milton, between North Grand Avenue and that area, as well as some areas to the west. So those little donuts that are gray are just areas that are not incorporated in the city of Springfield, which, by the way, also added another challenge. Because when you're looking at compact and contiguous, and you've got big sections of the land that you have to jump across, much like precincts do, it made things very complicated. But that's why they, why I have them. They solve the complicated, so.
And you said to pay more attention to Draft 1 than 2 because when I'm looking at Draft 1, I see how I have shifted over into Alderman Donilon's area and Alderwoman Conley's area. But then on Draft 2, it seems like it's pushed back more this way.
Again, because Draft 2 threw out precinct lines. And so to the extent that you want your precincts to be consistent with your existing wards as they have been and that kind of thing, then obviously, that makes a difference in the choice. But yes, because of the Ward 2 and 3 losing so much of the population, it naturally, any district adjacent to those, has to shift west to be able to pick up the population. And I mean, everything shifts east to be able to pick up the population. So you're taking from, you know, 8, 9, and 10 to be able to circle around and fulfill the loss on the other side. It's almost like it works in a big clock to kind of steal population and move it, move it, move it.
That's what it looks like exactly. Because I take my hat off to you, because as I stated before, Alderman Williams' ward is literally one block from our personal residence where the Ennis Park is. So if you would have shifted over, one, you would have put us on top of each other. So thank you for keeping that in mind.
Is there any houses for sale in your neighborhood? No.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
Thank you. Ward 6 has changed drastically, as you can see, from Map 1 to Map, the first draft and the second draft. And it, I don't even know what to say about this.
You're going to like what you got from me, I can tell you that.
What?
You're going to like what you got from me.
Well, I'm losing a lot of neighborhoods, and I'm barely in my own ward. So in my, in Ward 6, I did not, I shift, I did not shift west. I shifted south in a big way. So just, I'm losing a lot of neighborhoods that I, that I had.
Chris, it looks like you have a lot of that gray area, too.
I do, but I always have. That's not new. Because that's the original, that's where we are now.
You're going to have to buy a boat. You're so close to land.
Shh. My son might be listening.
Get one of the motorized surfboards.
Yeah, exactly. I like them.
Build small, Jim.
You can see it on the website.
You're up, Aaron.
Oh, I'm sorry. I probably should have just deleted. I, I think everyone's asked kind of what I was going to ask. We, but we will be able to see streets online, right? That's all? There's no way I'm going to read this.
I have it. What about the? I'm looking at it. Okay.
Alderman Redpath.
We'll have more questions later.
Yes.
What is that?
Doc, you're up.
Oh, I'm sorry. My question is for Corporation Counsel. How do we proceed with this, then?
This, you may recall that this is purely, I think, as Molly mentioned, is purely really a legislative decision. Ultimately, if there is a conclusion regarding Map 1 or other points of discussion, then we would bring an ordinance and to basically adopt the map, which must be done prior to August. Some of the issues, just thinking in broad scope, you may, it's something where you may want to formulate independently, you know, your questions, whatever the questions are that might be asked, or talk to Molly through the process to make sure there's as much information as possible. Ultimately, there will need to be a request for an ordinance to adopt a certain map. If you want to have a session, you know, a session by the city council, since it's a legislative process, we could schedule a special meeting to go through the detail that Molly could come to. We talked about that possibility. I think you did that with the school district process, didn't you?
We, we did. And, and it was all done in a public setting, so I don't mind sharing with you a couple of the, of the things that the school board did. And that was, there were a couple of, of school board members who had adjacent districts, and due to some shifting that was going to occur down the road, they're saying, what if we pick up this neighborhood and shift it with this other one and kind of exchange it? And so we ran the population numbers, and they were very similar. So we were able to just modify the map like that. It wasn't a huge thing.
But the process was through a sort of meeting, so.
Through legal council. Correct.
Alderman, in order to answer your question, I think in part, it's really at the pleasure of the city council. My own thought would be, a recommendation respectfully, would be to maybe have a special meeting if there's more detail needed, where Molly could come back if there's specific, like for example, questions, requests for information, things she could explain so everybody hears the same information. And if there is a, through that public process, if you reach a consensus on a particular approach, then there would just simply be a request for an ordinance to adopt, you know, a map. And going all the way back, that's exactly what happened with the consent decree, where the consent decree, when the ordinance adopting the consent decree happened, it actually had an attached map. It's the same, you know, same process.
And I'd be happy to make myself available to attend meetings if you have questions. Ideally, particularly if it's about a certain number or whatever, if those questions could be possibly collected, Mr. Zirkel, ahead of time, and you can get us those questions, and we can come better prepared to that meeting, that would be very helpful. Because we're here to provide as much information to help you make the best decision that you can, and one that's as cohesive as possible.
The, one of the, one of the questions that was talked about, I think even, even in council beforehand and so on, was the issue of the splitting of the precincts because of the, the original map, I believe you indicated had, is it 6 or 4? How many of the original, the existing map?
The existing map was also six split precincts. No, I'm sorry. There were four splits in 2010, and they all contained people.
So the option 1 that's being discussed is, I believe you indicated 6, but only 3 had people.
Only 3, right.
The significance of that, just as a purely practical matter, is when you split the precinct, then you're relying on the election process to actually identify which ballots to give in the same precinct. So in the case of recounts or different things of that nature, should that ever occur, you create a very complicated process if you have a precinct where you have ballots being for, for the same office, basically put into the one precinct voting box and so on, and then trying to sort through all that process. So that's the only point of concern or question, or at least cautionary tale, you would want to, I think, at least give some thought to. And Molly's recognized that. I know that you have pointed that out earlier, that that becomes potentially very problematic.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I was going to ask a couple of questions, but I think I'm going to wait until I can see the actual street view of it. I'm concerned because there are quite a lot of neighborhoods that, I mean, shoot, I'm basically on the edge of the, of the ward right now.
So am I, on both maps. Barely in that one ward.
I mean, it's crazy. I guess the only concern I have is, I mean, you've got Chuck going all the way over to Savannah Point, which is a, you know, it's a bigger neighborhood, but you're going to have, you're going, you better get, get a new, it's time for you to get a new truck, Chuck, because you're going to be traveling a lot. That's a.
Yeah, I'm getting a new firehouse.
No, I think that's still in my, in my ward there.
Let me.
But I, but I'm concerned about that. I mean, that's, that's an area I've been, you know, working with pretty heavy and, and, you know, and I'm like Kristin. I've got a lot of good neighborhoods that I've worked real hard with and, and kind of gotten to know a lot of the families and, and, you know, unfortunately, we're, you know, they're out.
Right. No, and I understand that because, I mean, I looked at the existing map as well as compared to the new map. Let me remind you again that one of the main problems we ran into, quite frankly, is, yeah, Chuck may need a new truck, but he also lives two blocks from the edge of his district. So there was an area there, because of where he's located, up in that cove, we couldn't shift that to Roy's area, so we had to take area from John's district for Roy to have, which came down to where Sean could gain that, which then was stolen from Kristin. Kristin was under population. We had to go south. It's a chain reaction. And so, and largely, I want to say, because we would, we'd get a map, and then I'd say, throw the houses on it. Well, we got two people against each other. We can't do that. So that was a real, it was a real challenge. Is this map perfect? I mean, if you want to make changes, make changes. It's a legislative function. So that's for all of you to decide. I just wanted to reiterate that my staff did, I think, as great a job as they possibly could, based on the criteria we needed to, to follow.
Alderman Donilon.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is clearly step one of many that we'll be taking with, with the map. And again, I appreciate you being here. My questions really are for Mr. Zirkel as it relates to the criteria that are of utmost importance, and that is the criteria that were adopted and set forth in the consent decree. And if you could, just for my benefit, if not others, could you please outline what those criteria are, and so that we can, as we go through this process, keep in mind that just how important those are?
I would be happy to reduce something to writing to, to provide to you, but essentially what, what we had provided to Molly was a combination of consideration for the voting rights lawsuit. We did provide her a copy of the consent decree. We did talk regarding the special requirements related to that. We also was considering some of the comments from the aldermen, you know, regarding not placing incumbents together in a, in a new ward, which is, which is common practice. That is not anything out of the ordinary. And then we looked at what the school district did in terms of just the general commentary to keep some very simple guidelines. But I'd be happy We did provide her a copy of the consent decree. We did talk regarding the, uh, special requirements related to that. We also, uh, was considering some of the comments from the aldermen, you know, regarding, uh, not placing incumbents together in a, in a new ward, which is, which is common practice. That is not anything out of the ordinary. And then we looked at what the school district did in terms of just the general commentary, uh, to keep some very simple guidelines. But I'd be happy to, uh, put together some more materials regarding the consent decree and provide that to you.
I would appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Zirkel.
Certainly, be happy to do it.
Alderman Conley.
Thank you, Alderman Flugenzey. Um, real quickly, I did remember one more question, Molly. Would it be possible for us to get a list of the precincts that are split in each of the two maps? So, you said there are six precincts split in draft one and 54 in draft two. If we could just get a list of exactly which precincts, I appreciate it, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, so, I, I got, I don't know how to get back, but anyway, um, so, are the new precincts drawn?
By.
I mean, because we're, we're discussing precincts as if that will be the precincts, and maybe they're not even drawn yet.
By law, and Mr. Zirkel, you can obviously speak up, but I believe that a county can, a county clerk can redo the precincts on an annualized basis, however, they must be done and adopted by the county board by June of each year. To my knowledge, no ca, new precinct maps have been, um, given to the county board. I know it's not on their agenda tonight, to my knowledge. I don't know about in June. Um, when I spoke, when we started this project, I spoke to Mr. Gray, um, a couple of months ago, at that point in time, they weren't positive they were going to do it this year, they might roll it to next year. So, your point is, yes, that the precincts may change.
Yeah.
Alderman Gregory.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, e, even if we, you know, make, make changes to this, a, am I correct in my assumption that the numbers still have to match up? Is, is.
For every change you make, if you, if you, if you take, if you, if you would, if Roy would get together and you would trade areas or whatever, then the extent to which the population is close, the better you are on matching the requirements. If you're trading 10 people for 300, then no, your percentages go off and your deviation goes up.
Right.
Um, is there a little bit of latitude and flexibility? Yes. But however, that is one of the definitions of compact and contiguous and approximately the same population in size, and I think that's an important thing to be mindful of.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Alderman Purchase.
Thank you, Chair. So, that is the elephant in the room for me. So, if someone wants to change an area, but I, per se, don't agree with it, or Alderwoman Conley doesn't agree with it, how do you work that out, since?
I don't. I take my instruction from Mr. Zirkel. You all work it out.
Hey, six votes.
I got her. And I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to be glib, but that, that's exactly why. That, it's a legislative function, and the ball is back now in your court. Very capable court to figure this out, and, and, and in any way that we could help, we'd be happy to.
And then, Molly, I just heard you, but I just wanna do a clarification again. So, you said that Don has not changed the precincts, but our precincts have changed on here.
Well, in 10 years, they have, yes.
So, he will be sending out the new precincts? Is that what you're saying?
No, 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 the draft one is based on the existing, when I said that it splits six, but only three with population, that's based on the existing precincts as they are today. I don't know the status of new precincts. I, I, I'm not involved with that.
Which will be in draft, draft two.
Draft two ignores all precinct lines, we just took them off and said, here you go, here's the population, here's this, and this, and this, and I did it for the school board just because it proved the point of how, where you live and where the precinct lines are, has an ability to change the map. But it also changes kind of the way you do business, in terms of working along precinct lines and those kinds of things. So, um, I, I did not mean to confuse the issue by draft two, it was more of an example, an illustrative example of what happens when you don't follow the guidance you gave me and, and, and kind of pop it out there. So, that's why I prefer you focus on draft one as our preferred recommended map, and work with it.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody else have any questions?
Thank you. Thanks, Molly.
Thank you, Molly.
Thank you, Molly. Okay.
Thanks, guys.
I'll see you when you want me.
I was sweating bullets waiting on you.
And I'm just gonna, we'll put these over to the side and then.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Can I make a request, um, that these are actually placed downtown, or downstairs in Municipal Center West, so the public can come in and see them if they don't have internet access? Is that possible?
That's up to the mayor's and Corporation Council's office. We're gonna leave them here, and I do suggest that I kind of promised Mr. Lesko that one would be in the clerk's office, um, but we brought extra sets, so I think there'll be ample spot for them to, to be displayed.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In fact, Mayor, do you wanna borrow some easels? You wanna borrow these?
Next, we have ordinances table to remain in committee. Mr. Clerk, would you please read those ordinances?
Yes. 2021-337, 2022-155, 2022-157, 2022-158, 2022-159, 2022-160, 2022-161, 2022-173.
Does anyone wanna take them, remove any of these ordinances for committee consideration?
Mr. Chairman, oh, I'm sorry. I forgot this request to speak thing.
Sorry, I never used to be for.
And I may not ever again.
Icy.
I'd like to, uh, pull ordinances 2022-158, 59, 60, and 61 off, out of the committee for consideration.
Second.
All right. Yeah, go ahead.
58, 59, 60, 61.
You have to go ahead and vote.
Do you want to just, uh, take those off now?
Yeah, all in, take a vote on it, if you would, Mr. Chair.
Aye.
We, oh, does anybody want to vote on it? We have to vote on it?
If you're, uh, excuse me, if there was a motion to take those forward for committee action, then motion second, all in favor?
Yes.
Uh, so you would do a voice vote?
Well, there was a second.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll take a voice vote?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against?
Thank you. 2022-158, an ordinance appointing Brian McFadden to the Springfield Economic and Community Development Commission.
Motion for passage.
I think second for the debate.
For debate, you mean?
They're all debate.
Yes, for debate.
2022-159, an ordinance appointing Terry Sheerholtz to the Springfield Economic and Community Development Commission.
Most, uh, move for debate.
Second.
2022-160, an ordinance appointing Leslie Scrow to the Springfield Economic and Community Development Commission.
Move for debate.
Second.
Chair.
2022-161, an ordinance appointing Joe Aleo to the Springfield Economic and Community Development Commission.
Move for debate.
Second.
All in favor of those?
Mr. Chair, uh, discussion, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Alderman.
Um, are any of these appointees here tonight?
President Scrow's here.
Hello, President Scrow. So, um, do we know what happened to the others? Do we get?
I believe there's a county board meeting tonight.
I see. Okay.
And Mr. Sheerholtz wrote a note, I think, to the.
Yes.
Kathleen, and, uh, suggested he already had a prior engagement.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, if we.
Do you wanna consider those now, or would?
We just moved them to debate, didn't we?
They go to the debate agenda.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
It's on the screen, so I'm not out of it, just to let you know. So, the, the ones who are not here tonight are gonna be here next week, is that my understanding? Uh, does anybody know the answer to that question? Let me ask them. Well, can we invite them to be here next week?
I think everyone was invited.
Yes, I know for tonight, yeah, so.
Yeah.
Okay. So, my questions was not for the ones who are here tonight. My questions are for the ones who are missing, just to be clear, you know? Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Do we know if there's a county board meeting next Tuesday night?
It's only once a month.
Okay, so it's a perfect opportunity for them to be here, and then, Mr. Chair.
Are we gonna do request to speak?
I'm, I'm, I'm next.
Okay, go ahead. Didn't want to move on before we had a chance.
If, uh, President, Park Board President Leslie Scrow wants to come up and speak, since she's here, she should have that opportunity.
Are we gonna vote now?
No, she just, we wanna ask her if she wants to come up and say a few words.
Leslie?
Please. And that was my question, I'm up next, that was my question, too, if she wanted to come up.
You can cross yourself off that list.
Good evening, and thank you for inviting me, and I just wanted to say that it is truly an honor, uh, to be here tonight, and, um, for the opportunity to serve on the Economic Development Commission. As I know most, I know most of you know, I am passionate about Springfield, and I am passionate about its success. So, um, I serve on, on lots of different boards in this community, um, and, um, I, I will just tell you that I will do everything in my power to make sure that, uh, the city, anything that I can do to help the city succeed. So, that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Leslie. Okay, um, those ordinances that are on the debate committee, is all, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Kind of passes.
Thank you. C W L P, 2022-181, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UW 23-03-13, riprap materials and Crown Trucking Incorporated, in the amount not to exceed $160,000 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
2022-182, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UW 23-03-14, mini excavator for C W P Lake Services with Lubie Equipment Services, in the amount not to exceed $67,800 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
Those, I forgot what I meant here. Do you have a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Order passes.
2022-183, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE 23-03-10, East L Substation Control Cable with American Wire Group LLC, in the amount not to exceed $118,500 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
2022-184, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE 23-03-12, wire tensioner, puller for T and D with Sherman and Riley Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed $135,739 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Order passes.
2022-185, an ordinance authorizing payment to Dell Marketing LP for Microsoft Software Assurance Maintenance, in an amount not to exceed $59,990.05 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
2022-186, an ordinance authorizing the transfer of FY 22 funds from one account to another for the Office of Public Utilities.
For debate.
Second.
Any discussion? Do I have, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
Public Works, 2022-187, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsible bid and authorizing the execution of contract number PW 23-03-09 with Corrective Asphalt Materials LLC for the FY 2023 Malteen-Based Rejuvenator and Restorative Seal for the Batuminous Pavements Program, in the amount not to exceed $231,335 for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Motion for consent, second.
Any discussion? Alderman Donovan.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a, just a brief question for the director, if he could come up real quick. Uh, my understanding is that this program is designed to seal and seal recently overlaid asphalt roadways with the goal of prolonging the life and the maintenance, therefore would be reducing, reducing costs, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, that's correct. It's, uh, in order to help rejuvenate the asphalt and help provide more oil to it to, uh, seal it up, that's correct.
And this is what you described last year, something, and last year, I think, was the first time we started this, right?
That's correct. Last year was our first year. We did a couple test strips, um, that they offered for free a few years ago, and we liked how it turned out, and last year was our first year.
It seems like it's working out, thank you.
Appreciate it, Director.
Oh, did we vote on the end?
Any more discussion?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
2022-188, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsible bid and authorizing the execution of contract number PW 23-03-07 with Donaldson Construction Company LLC for the FY 2023 Pressure pave program, in an amount not to exceed $725,773 for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
2022-189, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsible bid and authorizing the execution of contract number PW 23-03-06 with PH Broughton and Sons Incorporated, to provide services for the FY 2023 Batuminous Road Improvements Program, in a amount not to exceed $5,499,708 for the Office of Public Works.
Any discussion?
Move for consent?
Second.
Is there a motion?
Got a question.
Motion and second, and I have a question.
It's on your screen.
Alderman Conley.
Thank you, um, Director. Sorry, you sit in the back like that's gonna help you.
Step sign, Nate.
Getting the step sign.
It just lets you get out of here faster. Um, just real quick, if we could, um, at some point, get a list of the roads that are gonna be impacted by this purchase. This is one of our big, um, ARPA projects, so.
I'll send them out tonight.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
2022-190, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsible bid and authorizing the execution of contract number PW 23-03-08 with Complete Asphalt Service Company for the FY 2023 Crack Filling Program, in an amount not to exceed $191,900 for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
2022-191, an ordinance authorizing purchase of a small government term enterprise license agreement and maintenance agreement from ESRI Environmental Systems Research Institute Incorporated, for a three-year period from July 25th, 2022 through July 24th, 2025, in an amount not to exceed $248,250 for the Office of Public Works, Office of Planning and Economic Development, and the Office of Public Utilities.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, okay.
I just, um.
All in favor?
Mr. Chair. Can we just, I'm sorry. I have a.
Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, sir. Can we have an explanation of what this is for, just, just for clarity?
It's an enterprise license agreement for us to be able to utilize the software. Actually, Molly mentioned at the Esri software earlier that we use for mapping, geolocating our assets, tracking all of our assets on, in GIS.
I appreciate you, Molly. You're welcome.
We need that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
2022-192, an ordinance authorizing the execution of contract PW-22-12-75, a municipal lease agreement with NCL Government Capital for a five-year lease of two new truck-mounted Elgin Broom rear bear street sweepers with a trade-in of the used Tempco sweepers in an amount not to exceed $433,547 for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? I forgot that. None. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
2022-193, an ordinance authorizing the execution of contract PW-22-12-76, a municipal lease agreement with NCL Government Capital for a five-year lease of two new Elgin Pelican street sweepers with a trade-in of two used Tempco sweepers in the amount not to exceed $386,955 for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent. Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Alderman McMinim.
Yeah. Director, could you, we've got two sweepers of one kind and two sweepers of another kind. Could you just familiarize us with the, the idea behind that?
Sure. The, the truck-mounted ones are a little bit larger. You can drive them a little bit quicker so they can go on the outskirts of town as well as do a little bit larger areas quicker. However, the smaller Pelicans are kinda like, almost like a three-wheeler, three-wheeler which is a little bit smaller can get in tighter areas for cleaning the downtown or around cars a little bit easier. So having that versatility helps us out.
Appreciate it. Thank you. You're welcome.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
2022-194, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement with Malloy Morris Leonetti Parker LTD for pedestrian interest covers and a public restroom at the Old State Capitol Parking Ramp for an amount not to exceed $45,000 for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent. Second.
Any discussion?
Um, Mr., I haven't pushed the button yet, but is this gonna be a street level or below-ground lavatory or restroom?
It will be, we're proposing it to be street level, directly adjacent to the pedestrian cover, right in front of the feed store, in essence, just, just west of that structure. But connected to that and blended into it so it looks natural. We originally were looking at one of those portaloos, but that was fairly, fairly pricey and we wanted something that looked a little bit natural and blended with, with Old State Capitol Plaza and so, so that's why we went that route for that location.
Is he intended to use then 24/7, 24 hours a day, seven days a week?
Um, that's, we're.
To be decided?
Yeah, we're working those details out at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
2022-195, an ordinance vacating a portion of the right-of-way of Hazel Dell Road to the Illinois National Bank of Springfield as trustee under the provisions of a certain trust agreement dated May 4, 1976 and known as the Trust Number 13-04314-00 to eliminate an encroachment.
Move for consent.
Any discussion?
If you wouldn't mind, this needs to be debate.
Move to debate.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
2022-196, an ordinance authorizing a contract with Dossie Baker, Dossie D Sanders, Everson Sanders, NY Asia Sanders, and Starla Sanders for the purchase of real estate located 1128 North 10th Street in an amount of $32,500 and closing costs in the amount of $1,500 for a total amount not to exceed $34,000 relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project, Usable Segment 6 for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
2022-197, an ordinance authorizing a contract with Crowder Corporation for the purchase of real estate located at 1004 East Ennis Avenue in the amount of $62,500 and closing costs in the amount of $1,500 for a total amount not to exceed $64,000 relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project, Usable Segment 6B for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
2022-198, a resolution requesting temporary closure of a portion of Illinois State Route 6th Street, 6th Street from St. Joseph's to Adley Stevenson Drive for the Church of the Little Flower Men's Club Street Festival on May 27, 2022 for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
General City Business, 2022-199, an ordinance accepting RFP FD 23-07 with McQueen Equipment LLC for the purchase of six fire engines and one Quint fire truck in an amount not to exceed $5,196,951 for the Office of Budget and Management and the Springfield Fire Department.
Move for consent.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair. Who's first?
Hammond.
Thank you. I would like to be a cosponsor on this. I also would like to thank the Fire Department for going out and looking at bids on this because my understanding was we were able to save, I don't know what the amount was, but quite five, we got saved over $500,000 and we were able to get, what, an extra truck or something like that. It turned, it turned out good for the city, so.
Was there any questions? It was, it was $400,000 less than the next bid. It saved approximately $400,000 also by ma- making sure that we were able to get the bid process, the RFP process, which I want to thank Amanda Long and Purchasing for helping us with that. It saved $400,000 by being able to sign that contract before the increase went into effect on May 1st. So there was a lot of hard work that went into it, but then in addition, we saved another 200, almost 200,000, so it's over 500, but I don't know the exact number for how much we saved overall with the upfront payment too, which Director McCarty helped with.
And we also, don't we, my understanding is, is we get, get everything quicker than what we would have.
We do. One of the main components of the RFP that Deputy or Division Chief Mike Abbott, who was instrumental in putting the RFP itself together, was in how quickly they could get the apparatus to us as well. Obviously, we have needs. We, right now, we're having, we're having fire trucks in and out of the shop all the time, so this will get, one of the other bidders was pushing 22 months to get all of it for us and we should have some in seven to nine months and some in, and all by, within 11 to 14 months, so. So that part was also one of the things that we built into the bid, hoping that somebody would make an effort to push us up towards the front of the line, which I think did help by putting it out for bid, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Hand hour, Chief Blau, don't go nowhere. Alderwoman Conley?
Well, actually, Chief Blau just answered two of my other questions, so I would just ask to be added to this as a cosponsor, please. And congra-, thank you, Chief, for getting these going so quickly.
Thank you, Alderwoman Conley. Alderman McMinim.
Yeah, so I didn't push my button. I pushed the wrong space on this button, so Alderman Hanar beat me to the, to the, to the punch, but yeah, I wanted to be added as a cosponsor to this one and, you know, Chief, when the budget, fiscal year '93 budget came to us, there was no equipment request in that original budget. And you might recall that we, we talked and, and I think I even coached you on how to, we gotta have Alderman Redpath, he was Chair of the Committee of the Whole, and it wasn't really a budget discussion night, but Alderman Redpath said, yeah, let's get the chief out here to talk about the equipment request. And meanwhile, Mayor Langfeller, you had, we worked together well on that and you made a major shift in your thought or your proposed budget to accommodate this very significant spending. And so I think this is one of the major accomplishments of this council to provide the equipment that's needed. And Chief, you might not appreciate this quote, but the night that you made that presentation that Alderman Redpath allowed to take place at the Committee of the Whole, you said that equipment fights fires, not fire stations. And I, that kinda struck with me and I think it still motivates a lot of my decision-making around here, which we're gonna talk about later on. So thanks for that excellent presentation you made that night because you got everyone on board with the equipment request, so.
I appreciate everybody's, obviously, we couldn't have done it without the support of everybody in the horseshoe in the mayor's office and everybody in OBM and everything else. So it was a concerted effort for a defined need that we've had for a place on time.
Alderman Redpath.
Chief, congratulations on this. This is a historic time. I don't, I don't recall in the 30-plus years I've been up here that we bought this much equipment.
I'd bought seven horses at some point, but I don't know about seven fire trucks, so.
It's pretty historic and I'm, I'm really happy for you and proud for you and proud for the city. Now, we have discussions around this horseshoe every once in a while about the age of our equipment, so there's some aging. Do you have, you already have these earmarked for where they're going?
Uh, we're gonna look at, because, you know, from time to time, our, from day to day, we don't know which apparatus is gonna be in the lead as far as which one have the most problems. We generally know, okay, these are our four or five best, these are our four or five worst. But my, the way that we've gone about this from my perspective is, is that we're going to put the apparatus at the fire stations that run the most because the best thing that you can do is run this apparatus on the front end of it so that if there are any engine problems, if there are any transmission problems, you find out about those early in the process so that hopefully you're still within the warranty period. So we're gonna put these into the, the houses that tend to put more miles, more use on it, and then what we'll do is we'll filter those ones out to the houses that don't have quite as much run volume as others do.
So you, you'll match up a Quint, I think, with a truck team, so you'll have a two truck engine house and the Quint will subsidize anything that the truck unit can't run. Is that correct?
Provided that, the way that the, the stations, the station replacements and Station 13 gets built, then we will do some more jockeying after that and there will probably be the Quint by itself at one of the stations, but for now, that Quint will replace one of our aging trucks. Yes, and right now, all of our trucks are, are in multi-company houses.
And, and the new houses are going to be dual bay units so we can put a truck in a Quint or a truck and an engine at those, at those locations?
If it necessitated, yes.
And I'd like to be added as a sponsor to this.
Noted.
Thank you, Chief.
Alderman Donlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, Chief, when I first ran for office a few years ago, one of the things that was near and dear to me is, first of all, I want to say I believe in what you all do. I believe in it strongly. It has to be an utmost priority for the city and I committed back then that we would scrape together dollars and we literally had to for a few years to just get one piece of equipment.
Right.
And it was very difficult, had many hard conversations with your predecessors. This is something that is long overdue and, but I would ask that since, once they get here, if we could work on having a regular replacement program, if I am blessed to be here, I will, you have my commitment to be a part of that. And I think it's so important and, and I think we can't be, we can't lose the fact that this purchase and the types of vehicles and apparatus that you're proposing here, it is consistent with the plan, the recent study we had done. And that was a part of it. And talk about the purposes of, you know, and the utilization of trucks and the Quint and so forth, so thank you.
Great. Thank you.
And I'd like to be added as a cosponsor for sure.
Noted.
Alderman.
I'll start off, would I like to be added as a cosponsor?
Noted.
Thank you, Chief Blau, and I echo my colleagues, but when we get to that process, can you just keep us in the loop of where each truck is going?
Absolutely.
Like, I know you just said it to Chuck, but let us know when it's happening.
Yes, and we know, and we know, now, keep in mind, all six of the, the ones that are on this purchase that aren't coming in are identical, so we will have probably that narrowed down to the eight areas that these six will go to and I'm happy as, I'll, I'll talk, I can talk with Chief Abbott tomorrow and try and get something out to you to tell you, these are the houses that preliminarily, this is the ones that we're looking at.
Yes, and that's fine, but when you actually get to making the final decision, just keep us in the loop.
We will have to have them before they leave the factory. They will be stickered, so we will have to know far in, in advance of when we're gonna receive them, where they're going.
Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I definitely support the, the Fire Department and, and you guys have done a wonderful job getting, getting us some equipment prices. So my only quick questions are, all of these trucks, are they, are they able to fit in any of our firehouses that you would deem necessary for replacement?
They, they are. When I was a truck captain, we had, we had one that squeaked in by about three-quarters of an inch and I learned my lesson that day. That was 15 years ago, so.
I hear you. And my, my second comment is, you know, you know, I, I think this equipment purchase is important, you know, you know, all my time here with council, I've had, I've seen you guys in action a little bit and, and for some crazy reason, you guys are the first ones to the scene. And I remember not too recently, before you got rid of the, the white hat, the one, the one with the white top, I seen it rolling by and I was like, uh, he ain't, he ain't lying. It, it looks a little old and it looks a little hurt, so, you know, hopefully the, the people who you guys donated can, can get good use out of it. So I'm happy that you have these purchases and, and we thank you again.
Thank you.
Any discussion anymore? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes.
2022-200, an ordinance authorizing provider updates to the revised City of Springfield Deferred Compensation Plan.
Move to consent.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any against? Motion passes.
2022-201, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsible bid and authorizing execution of a five-year contract PW-22-02-88 with Cone Incorporated for maintenance of the elevators of the municipal complex for an amount not to exceed $132,000 for the Office of Budget Management.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
2022-202, an ordinance authorizing various inter-agency budgetary transfers to reconcile end-of-year budget levies with FY 2022 expenses for the Department of Budget Management.
Move to debate.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just need to take a better look at it, Chair. That's all, that's the reason why I'm putting on debate.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
2022-203, an ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $6,600,800 for a year-end reconciliation FY 2022 for the Office of Budget Management.
Move for debate.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Alderman.
Yeah, push this request to speak. We've got Budget Director McCarty here. Can he, Director McCarty, can you maybe comment on this ordinance and the previous one?
Sure, Alderman, thanks for asking. This is a normal procedure. Every year, we bring forth a couple of ordinances for transfers and supplementals just to clean up the previous year. That's what this is. There's several lines in there. The supplemental, I'll just point out on that one that the, the biggest things there are increased due to health insurance. I think that one is about, what, 2.7 million just because premiums or, or, excuse me, liability came in more than expected, which I think you got a glimpse of earlier in the fall when the premium increases came through and they were at 14%. We're just seeing some high utilization in our health insurance program, so that is what that is. And then there's a 3.6 million in there for Fund 94. That's really more of an accounting issue. As you know, we passed a loan to purchase like $4.5 million worth of equipment a year or so ago. That is set up in escrow, so actually, the city doesn't make that payment. We send it to the escrow agent, the bank that, and then they make the payment, so we didn't think we needed budget authority for it. But our comptroller, the, the head accountant for the city is telling us that they still have to book that and to do that, they need to have budget authority on paper. That's all that is. It's nothing new. And then the rest are, are little things here and there. Some of them, like the cemetery, had to deal with the fact that a lot of that is the Ask Me contract finally passing. The same thing happened in the Clerk's Office. There were, there was retro, there was bonuses associated with that. And the Clerk's Office, a longtime employee, retired, had a rather substantial payout. So just little things like that that were unanticipated that occurred throughout the little things like that that were unanticipated that occurred throughout the year. But if anybody has any questions, anything specific, I'd be happy to answer those now or certainly this week before next Tuesday.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to make a comment. I've still got the floor. You know, that two point seven million transfer to the Self-Insurance Fund, that's a major amount. And the way budgeting is supposed to work is that once this council appropriates a certain amount of monies to a line item and all those monies are gone, then this council should be notified that there's no more money to spend and that we need a supplemental appropriation back then. So I think I'm roughly guessing that the Self-Insurance Fund is over budget by about ten percent roughly. So we should have been notified back in, I'd say, December that there was an overspending. There's a problem with that particular line item. And that's when we should be notified, not in May, three months after the budget year has ended. So I've made this comment in the past, and I think it shows a disregard for the budgeting process when we get notification of overspending at this point in time. When the money is spent and there's no money left in that line item, it means you can't spend any money. There's no money to spend until this council appropriates the money. So that's all I got to say.
Mr. Chair, may I respond? I can certainly appreciate your concerns, Alderman. When it comes to certain areas, perhaps I can agree with you for the large numbers. In this one, though, that's really difficult to do. These bills come in months in arrears. So we wouldn't know in December that we were going to be there. You could have one large, say, a transplant or something like that and get a massive bill of hundreds of thousands of dollars unexpected that may not come in until April or May. Now, we certainly wanted to do something as soon as we knew it, but you just don't know with this particular area. Some areas we do know, like we talked about fire overtime, and we've made an effort to make sure the council is well aware of fire overtime that's running, because that was requested by the council and something that we certainly can know, and and we're happy to do that. Health insurance is one of those areas. It's very tricky, unable to do that. And quite frankly, Alderman, with this being collective bargaining and being part of benefits, it's not something that we would expect the council to turn down because it's something that we're obligated to pay for.
It's just a question of the council being notified of this. There's delayed spending and delayed bills paying every year. So based on historical experience, you know when we're going to be short. That's my opinion.
Alderman Conley.
Thank you, Chair. And this probably is also for Budget Director. We've had a couple of contracts, most notably the Fire Department contract that have passed, that I don't believe we had included in the budget. Do you know when we'll have those adjustments?
I will check on that and get back to you by next Tuesday.
But am I right, those weren't included in the budget?
Yeah, I know that Payroll was working on the numbers now. So and that's actually something, because we have, we're at the beginning of the year, and because we have budget authority already, we have a little bit of time to put that together and make sure the numbers are right, because the approach, there's plenty of approach there to pay for that retro.
Okay. And I guess, so the the contract was signed how long ago? Six weeks now?
I'll leave, I'll ask Corporation Council. I can't remember. Couple of months, maybe?
I can't tell if time's going quickly or slowly anymore.
February, March?
I believe it's been about a month ago, maybe six weeks ago.
We should expect to see that those retroactive payments will come soon. Okay, thank you.
I think if if you're talking about the logistics of the actual retroactive payments, I believe they're going to be in the next couple of weeks. I think Payroll had put together a report, but they do it by hand, you know, individually. So the actual payments will be over the next, I think, week or two. I I'm totally unaware on the, how that was accounted for in the budget, you know, the excess amounts.
Alderman Redback.
I understand, Mr. McCarty, that what you're moving around here, there's one thing on here that's a little odd. It's a twenty-five thousand dollar allotment to the Corporate Fund. That just seems out of place. What is that for?
Which line, Alderman, are you referring to?
I'm just reading the, I'm just reading it off of, off of.
There, there is a twenty-five thousand dollar, you're referring to the Clerk's Office, sir, and that is the area where they had a longtime retire, employee retire. So that employee got a pretty substantial payout that was unexpected, of course, when the budget was put together way last year. And then also, there are some Ask Me employees in that office. The contract was settled, so they would do a bonus and some retropayment.
That gets it. That just, that just seemed out of place.
No, I understand.
Thanks.
But you actually raise a very good observation. There's only one of all this supplemental, there's only one line, and it's really Corporate Fund, and that's for the Clerk's Office, as just explained.
Thank you. Alderman, hand out.
Thank you. Okay. What does this do to our, our fund balance percentage as far as what we started off with the budget? And so it's about five percent more, less than what we thought, correct?
It's negligible, Alderman, as we just talked about. There's only one small line in here for the Corporate Fund of twenty-five thousand dollars, so it's pretty immaterial to the Corporate Fund. And when we talk about fund balance, we're talking about the Corporate Fund.
That's for both, for both of these, both of these ordinances, two oh two and two oh three?
Yes, sir. The the transfer ordinance has a net zero budgetary impact. We're just moving money from one line to the other in order to make sure that the line is covered. There is no new money or no new appropriation in the transfer ordinance, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Alderman Donlin.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. My understanding is we all received at our seats this evening proposed Amendment Number One. I'd like to make a motion that proposed Amendment Number One be adopted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, if it's still in order, to put this on the debate agenda.
Second.
As amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Twenty twenty-two, two oh four. An ordinance authorizing a sponsorship agreement and payment of thirty thousand dollars per year for four years to Doug Knight for the operation of the Giant Slide located at the Illinois State Fairgrounds contingent upon his purchase of the Giant Slide pursuant to Article Seven, Chapter Thirty-seven, Section thirty-seven point six-two of the nineteen eighty-eight City of Springfield Code of Ordinances, as amended for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Motion for consent. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
Twenty twenty-two, two oh five. An ordinance to increase the number of Class D licensees by Maryflower Restaurant Incorporated, doing business as Maryflower Restaurant located at Two West Old State Capitol Plaza.
Motion for consent. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
Twenty twenty-two, two oh six. An ordinance accepting the lowest bid and authorizing execution of contract number PW twenty-three dash zero four dash twenty-two for Bobcat of Springfield for the purchase of a utility work machine, Bobcat Tool Cat UW fifty-six in an amount not to exceed eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
Twenty twenty-two, two oh seven. An ordinance authorizing execution of a contract with Honeywell International Incorporated for the purchase of the land and all improvements situated on the southwest corner of Eleventh Street and Ash Street for the amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars in closing costs and the amount not to exceed five thousand dollars for a total amount not to exceed eighty thousand dollars.
Move for consent.
Move to debate.
Second.
Is this for debate or?
Debate. Discussion.
Any discussion?
Yes. Do we have soil samples back on this site yet?
You can get your steps in tonight, too.
He needs help.
He knows more about this than I do. Yes, we do have soil samples back. We're still, oh, we don't have them back? Yeah, we're in the process of getting the soil samples, the additional soil samples at this time. They should be boring within the next couple of days, and then we should have the initial results and then the report following, hopefully within the next couple, within the next couple of weeks.
Okay, so I have a concern about buying this property if we don't know what's there.
Yeah, so we should, we should have the results. Like I say, we believe that we can make it work based upon what what we predict is there, but obviously we would, we want to evaluate that a little bit further. But we do believe it can be remediated either by engineering barriers or utilizing vapor barriers.
And do you have a cost estimate, what remediation would be?
We're in the process of developing that at this time. And then we also have the environmental ordinance that will be on to do the environmental work in order to get it approved by the EPA at this time.
Okay.
But we are, we're going to have to, we're going to need to do some reporting, some EPA reporting and some further evaluation. And we will have a contract for, with Andrews Engineering coming forward at the next meeting.
Okay, so we just spent two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars for the Station Eight site. And we're, this, this ordinance is for eighty thousand dollars plus environmental work plus remediation. Is that correct?
The remediation is not built into that. So we do have an estimate to do all of the engineering, get us through the process and get the no further remediation and the approvals that we need from the EPA for four hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
How much?
Basically, four hundred and eighty thousand dollars for that portion in order to get it done.
Before we build anything on it?
No, that that includes, that's a max, and that's includes putting, if we need to put a vapor barrier in approximately, estimating a hundred thousand dollars for that.
Four hundred and eighty thousand dollars for this, to buy this land and do the remediation.
To do, to help the remediation, that's correct. And do the environmental clearance so that the land can be redeveloped and put a fire station on the house. Correct.
Okay. I will definitely be a no on that.
Thank you.
Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would, one, like to be added as a cosponsor on this ordinance. You know, for for the neighborhood that's there beyond, you know, any type of lines, they they are excited at the chance. And, you know, one of the things, you know, that I would like to see while we do this, because if it doesn't go here, there's some other options that I think we discussed before. It it has to stay in a certain box. And I think for the sake of of the data that we show with fires and and the constituents, you know, in this neighborhood, you know, Harvard Park and in this neighborhood, I think that it's important that that we have a community meeting, you know, as well as, you know, everybody's in on TV and some things out west and things. So we are working and, you know, I think it's time for the same type of community meeting and respect to be given to the citizens in this area, so they can chime in and we can continue on. So I, you know, I'd like to be added as a cosponsor, and I will support any remediation that's needed, because if not this, somebody's going to come along, they want to build there, and they're going to be trying to wiggle us out of some, some funds to, to, to develop it. Companies like this that leave and and stuff should be helping out with, with, with making sure the land is all good, you know, in the first place, or else it'll never be nothing. It'll just be a lot for the rest of his life. And, you know, that's not, you know, what we need to do for that neighborhood. So thank you.
Alderman Conley.
Thank you. Actually, Chief, this is a question for Director Bottom. I don't know how often you've worked with EPA on the NFR letters, but do you know approximately how long that process is?
It can take some time. However, you can also be under construction and clearing up the paperwork. It can take twelve to twelve to eighteen months in order to get through the entire process.
Right. So but when you say under construction, that's the under construction for any sort of engineered barrier that would have to be installed in order to then build on top of this?
You could be doing it simultaneously.
Okay.
But like I said, you do have to be through a portion of the process in order to do that.
Yeah, so it's, this is not something that.
But the entire, I'm talking about the entire process, getting the letter, and then they have to verify it after construction. That's, that's that twelve eighteen.
Right. So that that whole process adds not just really almost five hundred thousand dollars potentially to the cost of this particular location, but also a significant amount of lag time in terms of us being able to have Station Six open in a new location. Right? I mean, realistically, it does.
Realistically, I mean, we still have to get through the plans and get those out to bid and everything along those lines. So we're still a few months out for that. But, you know, you could potentially be ready depending upon what remediation needs to be done to basically go out to bid in six months.
And these are underground storage tanks? Is that the main?
No, they're, they're not.
It was industrial production? Okay. And then, Chief, just given that kind of information, I mean, significant increase in cost and a significant delay in the station that we as a council all said was the priority station, top priority, are you looking at other locations?
We've looked at a lot of other locations, and none of them are as good. As far as starting the process on purchasing another location, if we were going to do that, obviously there, this is, this is disappointing. This is not what we were hoping for, that there was going to be this delay. But I've said it before, and I'll continue to say it, that a sixty-year decision being delayed by twelve to eighteen months, to me, is not as big a deal as as it is to some. But at the same time, by the time that we found another location, we we tried to procure another location a couple of blocks away, they didn't want to buy. We didn't, we can't make people give us their land while we can, but that's, that's a, that's a pretty unpopular way to go about it.
And I appreciate that. We're not.
And the combination process is a year, so.
Okay, thank you.
We, we have, we have looked at all other locations. As far as every, everyone sitting around here has heard me preach, response time, response time, response time. That's what we're trying to do with, with this. And and quite frankly, from my perspective in a, in a long-term view, I don't think twelve to eighteen months should be something that should stop you from putting a firehouse in the right place.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman, dissent.
Yes, Chief, you and I have had extensive conversations about this. I, I don't think this is in the right place. I've expressed my concerns to you, and there is a huge gap in service in the map you yourself created. So, you know, I think that we need to, if this is a sixty-year decision, then we need to take some more time.
Are you talking about the gap? Are you talking about over in the Stanford area?
Yes.
And and there's no, there's currently not any, any plans on developing that. There's, there's no neighborhoods right there. We know where the firehouse is now, which would be two, two blocks away or so. We know there's a need there. We know that we need to fill that four-minute response time need there. I'm not saying in the future that there won't be a need for that, but in the immediate future, I think that as far as putting this in the right place, it's currently in the right place. It's just boxed in. So the closest we can do is move that a couple of blocks. I think that this is still the right place. We've done, we've done tons of analysis. We've done hours and hours of looking at stuff on this. So this is, this is the best place.
Have you looked at the old car wash on Sixth Street? Actually, a constituent came to me with that.
Old car wash. Oh, it's five, six.
I grabbed a Java.
Yep.
Seven blocks north and a little bit west. We did not consider that, because, quite frankly, when we had the spot that we, we wanted, we were hoping that we were going to be able to to navigate this. If this is something that is not, and I've used the word before, I don't know if I made it up or not, overcomeable as far as what this, what challenges that this spot is going to present to us, then we will have to open it back up and look at things. But I, but once again, from my perspective, patience needs to be employed on this to make sure that we get all of the information backed and we know what's in it. How much is it going to talk, cost? How long is it going to take? Until I have that data, I'm not ready to to jump off of the site.
I would say we're not ready for a public meeting on this site yet.
Probably not.
Alderman Donlin.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief, are we able to, is it safe for us to go along with you, of course, to look at the site?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we can, we can go there. And, I mean, some of the information that we have to find out about the site is, are there, are there areas where they're, where they're going to, that are going to test that do have things that are concerning to us and possibly areas that have no contaminants whatsoever that we can just shift where on that piece of ground that we can put that firehouse and be, be totally, totally well.
It would help me understand.
Sure. And there is an area that that is gated off that we, that they have told us that this is one of the problem areas. But until we get the, until we get all of the information back, I can't, I can't tell you, but I'm happy to go out there with that.
I will reach out to you on that one.
Absolutely.
And you addressed my question I was going to ask about the Stanford proposal, because it's something that your predecessors have promoted.
Right.
Over the years, and and you addressed some of those questions that I had.
Yeah, but we disagreed on whether that was the best part of that.
If we were to, if we were to have to choose a different site where construction from scratch had to occur, how long does, I mean, I know we talked about this with other stations, but about how long does that take?
Well, I mean, like we said, we, an alternative that was only a block or so to the, to the north, we did, we talked to people. We tried to see if that was going to be an alternative that we could acquire, and they weren't interested. There's a couple other places that, all of them have challenges. I was approached about the Bel Air property and just the way that the traffic goes there, where you have a one-way and a one-way, and Stanford that comes through on, on Fifth and Sixth there is challenging. There's just not a lot of.
I'm aware that any site's going to have a challenge, Chief. I'm just asking if you had a site that was ready to go and it was acceptable to the council, how, just how long would it take to, you break ground and you go? Is it a year? Is it?
Oh, I don't think it's a year.
I don't either.
I, I, I think that, you know, I would kind of defer on how long it takes to close on a property currently, because obviously the real estate market is crazy right now.
Just a ballpark. What I'm asked for is a ballpark. You start construction.
Nine months?
Nine months. Okay, thank you.
Twelve months, somewhere in there.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
I'm.
Three?
Three.
Six months? Okay.
I'm just.
I'm the wrong guy to ask, I guess.
Thank you. In, in closing, I just want to say that this station will be less than two, in this, at this location, at Eleventh and Ash, it will be less than two miles from three other stations. So that response time, I, I'm just, I'm not sure what we're, what we're talking about here, because if it's that close to three other stations, then that tells me there's a hole someplace else.
Appreciate what you're saying.
Alderman Conley.
Thank you, Chair. And I promised just one more question, because I realize this decision, you know, this, this proposal came prior to changes at the school board has recently, the school district has announced, where they're consolidating three grade schools to like an over, a four hundred-plus student building, just, which would be south of this location. How much does, would that factor into your considerations of how you deploy resources? Because we're taking, we're talking about, you know, Hazel Dell, Lake Town, and then Southern View Schools. And when they're being put all together and it's, you know, it's. And when they're being put all together and it's, you know, it's the elementary age kids.
Right.
Um, it's coming, they're actually all coming a little bit north, am I right? I think they all are a little bit north of where they are currently.
I don't even know the sites where they're actually, I, I'm just now getting into the loop that I knew that they were going to consolidate, but I didn't know they had a site pick or anything like that.
Like, they literally just, I think they just took that vote last week. So, it's not, um, I would just think that to me is, is a larger consolidation of, of very young, you know, obviously, school-aged children and then, um, and moving in a way that, that may impact how you wanna look at response times too. If we could, I just wanna make sure that we're factoring those, those safety concerns into this also.
Understood. I'll look at it tomorrow.
Thank you. And I, I don't, I don't, I think I know where the, the location is, but I don't wanna be quoted incorrectly.
I'll find out.
Thank you, sir.
Alderman McMillan.
Chief, we put a lot of time into response times, but we also have to look at the fire risk in a certain area. We have to look at the possibility of multiple calls in a certain area. We have to look at the possibility of a, one station backing up another station. We have to look at, we talked about, you know, some of the new construction is hotter and faster, but we have to remember that, that old construction is knob and tube wiring oftentimes up in the attics and people are using knob and tube wiring for more, uh, high ampage equipment. And they go in and they tech out the lower amp fuse and put in a higher amp fuse so the switch doesn't, uh, flips as often. And so, we have to look at the risk of fires, not only response time. And so, uh, that's why I think, uh, this station is so important, because it's in a high-risk area. This, uh, Station Six at Isles and, uh, and 11th Street.
I agree with you. Um, and that was one of the, the things that, uh, Alderman DeSenzio, uh, talked about, that these firehouses are close together. These are our fa, our, our most, our busiest firehouses as well. So, the overlapping in coverage that you're talking about is very important in those areas, because they are running a higher volume of, of calls. So, sometimes they're out of their district, district running another call. Somebody else has to cover them. This is the inherent redundancy that's been built into the system and I'm just trying to continue that.
Any discussion? More discussion, Ian? All in favor?
Aye.
Against?
Thank you.
Motion passes.
2022-208, an ordinance authorizing execution agreement with Harold O'Shea Builders Incorporated for construction management and oversight of the construction for the three fire station locations for a total amount not to exceed $895,000 for the Office of Budget and Management.
Vote for consent.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to move for debate.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against?
Uh, motion passes.
Any discussion, Mr. Chair? Just, I think we're, I think we ought to, on this kind of a spending for three stations, we ought to wait until we know what we're gonna build and the timeline for the building. So, that, I would prefer to put this on hold till we have decided what we're gonna build and where. But that's part of the reason for putting it on debate, if we can't hold it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Do we have any more?
No, sir, you're unfinished business.
2022-203?
That, that was an amendment. Chairman, you're on to unfinished business.
Okay. Unfinished business.
Yes, I, I'm sorry.
Purchase. Alderman Purchase.
Thank you. Um, Director Bottom. Hi.
He's sitting closer to the front.
Um, I wanted to check in. I've been getting some residents asking me, how is it going with our testing on the gum ball trees? I've got the same request.
So, um, we did the application at the, at the appropriate time, right before the flowers elongated and we did see a reduction approximately 30 to 50% of the gumballs. It doesn't totally eliminate them, so it, it, it was effective. Um, and, um, we're planning on, on looking, looking into it a little bit further. We're also looking at develop, we're in the process of developing the sweet gum removal and replacement plan as well. Um, looking at the tree inventory results that we did do, uh, for a portion of the city. Um, it's the third, uh, most species we have and it's over 7% of our trees. And best management practices for, um, for trees is a 2010-15 rule, where you only want 20% of your trees to be in the same family, 10% in the same genus, genus, I always screw that word up, um, and then 5% in the same individual species. And, and ours is over 7%, so it's kind of a por, a portion of why we're considering, uh, removing them. We're working on that at this time. We'll plan on bringing something to you shortly.
Thank you for that update. And when you do bring us something shortly, um, do you mind? It seems like that is such a huge topic in the community. And when we put that post out, there were a lot of people requesting and, um, we sent them to your office to call. Could we do some type of community meeting, uh, based around that? So, it's like one message going out versus all of us getting requests and sending them in to you?
Yeah, or we can, we can actually post something on our website. We'll put a link, um, on our website with, uh, the sweet, um, treatment program and different, different ways that you can battle that, as well as, uh, we'll, we'll post a sweet gum removal and replacement program once we get that set up. That'd probably be ideal.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Williams.
Yes, uh, I don't know who to direct this to, Mayor. Uh, so, or, uh, we, we did the loan thing or the financing for, uh, Leland Grove, I believe it was, uh, their portion of MacArthur. I, I need to know the date that, uh, they were supposed to pay that back or if it's paid back yet, or who, who would know that? You know?
Yeah, actually, they're, uh, having a, I guess, ribbon cutting or groundbreaking tomorrow at 10:00, so everybody's invited. And then Senator McClure, I think he's the one that requested the, uh, the funding. So, um, he'll be there and I'll be sure to ask him when that would be released.
Thank you.
Alderman Redpath.
Director, I know that all, all the projects have been held up because of the spring rains and the, the weather we've incurred, uh, in the last month or so, but, um, can you tell me where we're at on the, the sewer, uh, RFPs that we have to work with, uh, the Water Reclamation District on for Linden Lane and Healthorn? Because that's a long process and I was just wondering how fast we're gonna get to that.
Yeah, my understanding is it should be bid within the next couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman McMillan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Alderman Williams, for asking about the Chatham Road project. The, the construction, by the way, they, they're just finishing up now the Leland Grove portion of it. They're doing a good job. I mean, the, uh, Broughton and the subcontractors are doing a good job. I think Leland Grove owes us a, a massive thank you, because we did lend them a million dollars, which could've gone to our own projects. And by the way, you know, we've tried to ask Leland Grove beginning back in November. I think, um, um, Coordinator Griffin wrote a letter to Leland Grove asking them, you know, what grants did you get? And we had phone calls, what grants did you get? And, uh, Alderman Redpath suggested we send our, our C Attorney sent a letter, you know, Leland Grove, what grants did you get? Because if you remember, a year ago, Leland Grove Mayor came here and said, we, hey, the grants are right around the corner, a couple of weeks, maybe a month. And we just need, you know, good faith answers and good faith response and, um, honesty when we, um, invite folks to come speak here at the council. Um, so we just, I think they're up to, um, I think they got 5 million, uh, excuse me, half a million in the, in the pocket. And, but we don't, haven't heard what more they've gotten. So, but if they've gotten some of that money, we wanna get repaid and I, um, because we've got our own projects we wanna put the money into. So, thanks for inquiring, Alderman Williams.
Could I follow up with that?
Sure.
Uh, if, if you recall, they came to us with a $1.4 million, uh, proposal and we cut it back down to 1 million, uh, thinking that when they did get their grants, that they could use some of that money to fulfill their obligation for the 1.4. So, if they got a half a million, they're still right on the bubble, right there. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Good.
But they're working on it now.
Yeah, the, the project's almost done. I mean, uh-
Above the road.
Yeah. Folks are very happy about it. I mean, especially Springfield residents, I'm getting lots of, hey, uh, Springfield did a great job on, on Chatham Road. And, you know, it's all our money, mostly. So, uh, it's, it's a one, and Mr. Mayor, thanks for, you know, getting it done, because we're going all the way up to Route Four now. This, this current year, we're gonna go from Jefferson up to Route Four. So, we got like a, almost a three-mile stretch there done. It's well done.
North Grand, but, uh, we're getting there.
Oh, God. You, all right, that, that wasn't, that was all right news, I guess. Oh, thank you, uh, uh, Alderman Redpath. Hey, 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 excuse me, Director.
Trying to get out of there, Nate.
The, the sewers, again, Adloff? Uh, are, are we like next week starting our? On Adloff and Stevenson, the sewer project?
Stevenson, we're doing some televising at that location and, uh, and some engineering at this time, but, uh, I'm not, I'm not sure what-
No funding from Senator Turner and, um, has been released that you know of or?
We are working with DCO in order to obtain that funding. But, uh, we, we have the funding, but we're just working on all the paperwork. Um, DCO is, was fairly far, far behind, but, uh, we're working with the representative in order to get that funding obtained.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor Lane.
Yeah, just, uh, again, uh, the, the announcement, I guess, is tomorrow 10:00. Everybody's invited at Leland Grove, Billy Child, 2000, Chatham Road. So, um, I'll be sure to ask Senator McClure when the funds will be coming, but that's part of the, uh, announcement, I guess.
Would you please, uh, let the mayor of Leland Grove know that I haven't been invited, so?
Expect an invite, Joe?
That's why they wanted, I think that's why they wanted me making announcements. Everybody's bill, everybody's invited, everybody in the audience, everybody round the shoehorn.
I'm glad that we got some-
But, uh, they do, I mean, every, you know, everybody talks about sweet gum ball trees. Well, we've heard a lot of compliments on our Walnut and Chatham Road. It's been a long time coming and regardless of the jurisdictional boundaries, people appreciate that we got it done. And they don't, uh, believe me, I think they view it more as Springfield getting it done than, uh, even realizing it's in Leland Grove. So, thank you for your work on that, Alderman McMillan.
Sincere comment, because we sat at the bench at Alice Park and worked that out, Mayor, back in April a year ago. So, thank you very much for supporting it.
Alderman Conley.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I'm, I'm, we're still on unfinished business, right? Sorry.
I didn't hear you.
Thank you, Chair. I'm, I'm, I'm fine.
Oh, that was a false request?
False request, yes. I was just trying to keep Director Bottom up here a little longer.
I just wanna thank Alderman Hanauer for telling the whole world that I needed a new truck, because I got people calling me now wanting to sell my truck.
I'm just waiting for someone to start-
Haven't gotten one in two months.
I'm waiting for someone to start calling us about our extended warranty on those fire trucks.
The extended warranty, the truck's coming, that call.
Somebody has to stop the warranty calls.
Alderman DeSenzio.
It's really new business. Well, it's unfinished and new. Um, there's a Ward Six cleanup this Saturday. Um, Ward Two's also having a cleanup and Vinegar Hill, Ward Five, uh, Alderman Purchase is joining along with my cleanup. So, um, even if it rains, there's a chance of storms, of course. There always seems to be a chance of storms when you have a litter pickup day. Uh, but I'll be at the Mellow Cream on Laurel at 8:30, so free donuts and coffee, even if it's raining. Even if we pick up no trash, you're gonna get some coffee and donuts.
For sure.
Alderman Purchase.
Yeah, it looks like we're in new business. Um, I'm excited about that, that cleanup on Saturday, but I'm crossing my fingers that there is no rain and that we can get out there. And then, I just wanted to say that we had a awesome time on Saturday at the Fat Ass 5K.
Can you say that?
We had over 2,500 people register to participate and it was just really nice to see everyone out. Thank you, Alderman Donnellan and your wife for coming out and joining us and walking the whole way and eating and having a good time. Um, so I look forward to that next year. And then just a few things for downtown. We have Momentum, Momentum on Main Street is having a training on pop-up to storefront tomorrow at Anvil and Forge at 5:30. Then we also have Adopt a Street on Saturday from 8:00 to 10:00, praying that it doesn't rain on us. And then we also have Open Streets on Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00 and I invite everyone to come and participate, including my colleagues. And that's it.
Mayor Lane.
Thank you. A couple other announcements tomorrow. I don't know if Chief wants to speak to this, but the American Red Cross and the Fire Department are going to do their Sound the Alarm. I think it's the first time in two years that they're doing the fire alarm installations to, I believe, about 250 houses. And that's gonna be at the Salvation Army Clear Lake Community Center. Uh, if you want, if you're interested in volunteering, you can be there at 8:30 and then, uh, you start at 9:30 and start installing with the volunteers from the Fire Department and-
The address and everything, yeah. It's at 9:30 Salvation Army Building. Uh, we're gonna go until about 1 o'clock. Once again, we haven't been able to do this in a while. It's a nice opportunity to get out, be able to, uh, talk to the neighbors and, and get them, get some needs filled as far as that goes. So, anybody wants to show up? 9:30 Salvation Army.
If I can, Mr. Chair, it's, it's amazing. We did it in Ward Nine a few years ago and I, I was shocked at how many of the residents did not have an appropriate smoke alarm, let alone carbon monoxide detector. So, this is great. I'm glad it's being pursued and starting back up.
American Red Cross, who provides for this, uh, generally, we also have a partnership with them and anytime that our people go into a house and they notice that they don't have, uh, smoke detector, uh, we, that we gave them toolkits, they will go right in, put one up and send in the paperwork for them.
Thanks for restarting, it's a great program.
Yep, it is, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Then also on Saturday, Girls on the Run is doing their annual track. It starts at Lincoln Land at 10:00 AM and they're going around the Toronto Road, uh, Shepherd Road area. That's for, uh, young individuals, usually grade school of age. That's it. Thank you.
Uh, do we have any citizens signed up to address the committee?
Do we have, uh, do we have one?
No one signed up, Chair.
Okay. Are there any citizens that wanna address the committee? Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Are there any, uh, do we have a executive session tonight?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Very much.
Motion for adjournment.
Second.
Y'all let the man do his job. I mean, y'all just brat. They gotta let him get to the Chatham. Well, you really do. You, you, you mix up.